This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, Southampton. Everybody that's in line has been told that I talked for a while, so they're not going to miss out on any votes. A quorum of fifty is present. I call our 2025 annual town meeting to order. We have a pledge of allegiance. John Lumber, may you lead us, please? Please write for the pledge and join us if you wish.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am and states America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John Lumber. Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It's a privilege and a pleasure to serve you. I also serve as your Southampton Cemetery Commissioner Clerk. I take no compensation for either role. It's a busy season. The town election is Tuesday, May 20th, and spring into Southampton is on May, John, May 16th and 17th. Thank you for prioritizing tonight. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton. Our legislative branch session is called according to a posted warrant. It is the official record of what will be discussed and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may take action. I'll read the warrant. Warrant returned, Town of Southampton. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Southampton by posting an attested copy at the Southampton Town Hall and five or more other places designated for the posting of such notice seven, actually, seven days before holding said meeting. Councilman Jared Hamel, 425, 2025. Some wisdom borrowed from fellow moderators throughout the Commonwealth. Two hundred fifty years ago, the time of Reading stated, "Every new measure of parliament increases our distress. We cannot give in without giving a part of ourselves. An executive right of taxing would be but little better than slavery." At its annual town meeting days ago, the moderator of North Andover said that these local democracies by their nature toward Americans the virtues and responsibilities of self-government. It was through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial American public embraced the unable right of self-determination, which in turn sparked a revote and fueled the revolution. The voices then raised actions taken, financial support committed, and lives and liberties pledged at many town meetings, and the Commonwealth remain our worthy heritage. In the two hundred fifty years since the revolution, our Southampton citizens and town meeting voters have maintained and strengthened our town meeting. Tonight, you occupy those seats, those same positions as we carry on this fantastic form of self-government. Our revolutionary predecessors shocked the world by defeating the tyranny of their time and inspired the dawn of democracies across the globe. Their formula for success was solidarity among a coalition of people with diverse viewpoints, united in that relentless determination to be free. That is what it means to be an American. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved on ahead since our last annual town meeting? Hold them dear in our hearts. This evening, our annual town meeting will be broadcast locally on Channel 191 and streamed on the e-media YouTube, eshamptonmedia.org. That link can also be found on the e-media Facebook page and Instagram. Thank you, Tim Riley, Jackson Foot, and e-media. Warrant. Articles are posted in at least five locations to warn the public about a legislative meeting. You have taken heed of the warning. The executive branch of our town's government, the Select Board, Finance Committee, Treasury Collector, Accountant, Town Clerk, and Administrator have worked hard to create and weigh in on this evening's annual town meeting warrant articles. Their work is done. Some members of our executive branch sit in the front. According to our tradition, everyone at the head tables is a guest of the moderator. They do not have more of a vote or input than any of you in our annual town meeting tonight. Town moderators' rules rather than a town council's legal opinion apply while our town meeting is in progress. Your moderator allows commercial TV cameras, which are a privilege, not a right, provided they stay at the back of the town meeting room, on the far side of the floor line, or outside the building, avoiding aisles or hallways. As your town moderator, my role is to facilitate an open process that voters can trust, administering the rules and guidelines in an even-handed, impartial, and consistent manner regardless of who you are. I do not guarantee any specific outcome. One of my duties as your moderator is to safeguard the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, whether unintentional or otherwise. Moderator's authority is limited to the process, not the outcome. I trust the outcome to you, the fully informed voters of Southampton. Procedures achieve goals rather than manipulate town meeting proceedings. I assist every dedicated voter as I serve the town. Therefore, if your inexperience here is holding you back, let me guide you through the process this evening. You challenge my process with a point of order shouted from your seat. I will invite you to the microphone where you can describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to use this as a tactic to usurp the floor will be addressed firmly. Your responsibility is to serve as the legislative branch of our town's government for tonight's articles. Town meeting is a form of legislature where the government trusts the people. You have the power to enact laws, control the budget, and exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating in town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused or denied. The moderator is responsible for conducting the meeting as authorized by our Commonwealth General Laws, Chapter 37, Sections 15 and 17, our bylaws, town meeting time, traditional customs and practice, which we have followed for many years. This process remains dynamic as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Once a motion is read, and I've asked for and received a second, I invite a pro statement followed by a con statement. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us, including the merits or lack thereof of the motion. It's when after common is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator. At that point, the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the microphone at the front. Stand in line to be acknowledged by the moderator in order. First come, first served. I recognize speakers only when they stand at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator. Clearly state your name and address. Avoid speaking directly to others. Helps to avoid lecturing, bullying, and intimidation, cross-examinations, or out of order. Speak up to five minutes at a time. Some towns only let you speak two. As long as you stay on topic regarding the motion and direct your opinions, questions, answers, and remarks to me, not the town meeting audience. And no more than twice in any article except to correct an error or answer a question. Please ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard before you ask to be listened to a second time on an article and make concise, to-the-point remarks. Both sides will be heard regarding each article to keep the integrity of our town meeting as intact as possible. I will permit anyone who has previously spoken to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition. Before you cast your vote, whether yes or no, your fee to question, amend, and table will kill any motion, that is, to legislate in a civilized manner. Amendments are letting the town meeting adjust an article to make it more palatable rather than voting it down. Amendments must be submitted in duplicate. Please print your name on it for our records. Please do not applaud, cheer, boo, shout, but listen to what each person has to say before making your final decision. Please show respect for your neighbors who may vote differently from you. This is a legislative body and should be contemplative. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after the third warning, so let this be our first warning. My goal has been to provide the town meeting with as much factual information as possible so that you can make informed votes that are best for you. Anyone unsatisfied with a lack of information for an article may motion to adjourn our annual town meeting to 7 o'clock tomorrow night so that the presenter can obtain the necessary information. Are there any reasons to change the order of the articles? Hearing none, we proceed. Simply because someone states something does not make it accurate. The majority that leans towards approval-denial does not make it right. Any non-voters, non-voting speakers to vet? We've got a few. Dawn Scapparetti, Business Manager of the School. Vito Perrone, Superintendent of the Schools. Kathy McGowan, Minister of Assembly, Assists and Assessors. Hearing no objection, they will be permitted to speak tonight. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will help us have a more efficient meeting. Can I re-motion for Article 1, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $23,527,778.57 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal 2026. All as shown in the town's annual operating budget and identified in the column labeled FY26 Recommended Budget, A, Non-Contingent Appropriations. And to fund this appropriation, that $16,166,532.63 be raised from taxation, $17,500 be transferred from the WPAT loan, $269,090.40 be transferred from ambulance fees, and $97,184.60 be transferred from ambulance stabilization.
We have two motions under this article. We're going to take one motion at a time. We're going to discuss and vote on the budget, and then we'll discuss and vote on the override. May I hear a second for the motion for the budget, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. I'm pleased to present to you-
I don't know if your mic's on.
Get closer. Okay. I'm pleased to present to you the first budget of $23,527,778. I'm not going to lie, it was a difficult time getting to this. Oftentimes, it was like playing those games that you see at the Biggie or at the arcade Whack-a-Mole where you hit something and something came up. Realistically, it started off with a 20% health insurance increase this year for our employee benefits. It went into the school override, then we had our free cash reduced from some old grants. And even on my way here tonight, the state senate just released their version of the budget, which had some reductions in it. So, the budget's always going to be a constant change until it's finally finalized. But we did get through it, and I am proud to present the budget tonight. And we couldn't have done it without help from the Select Board, the School Committee, all the department heads, Superintendent Perrone and his staff. It was really a team effort to get this done. The three ways that I would describe the budget this year, and there are a lot of changes, but it would be transparent, it would be efficient, and it would be responsible. You might have seen the QR codes and the budget books this year for the transparency. We also set up a website which would detail all of the requests, as well as video of all of the budget meetings, and as well as the final budget. For efficiency, we are trying to consolidate different items to make it easier and more efficient through the administration of it. And responsible, by not only addressing today's issues, but also starting to plan for the future. Now, when you look at the format of it, some of it is a little bit different, and it is going to take a few years to kind of catch up, especially on things like year-over-year comparisons. When you consolidate a line item or if you split a line item apart, there may be some superficial things that would be increased, a little bit more, a little bit less. So it will take a few years to finally get a real cycle of what the budget will look like. The first step is looking at the first page. So the first page of each department shows the overview. The second page is the personnel costs, and the third page are the operational costs. Now, getting into the budget, there certainly were the challenges this year. As I mentioned, there was an 18% to 20% increase for benefits, for health insurance. That was a huge, huge setback for us. We're hoping to address that in the future, to find ways that we can reduce that, or at least make it level off. But going through the different departments, starting with general government, you'll see a few different line items that are brand-new. General government is really the umbrella of all the funding sources that would impact all the departments. The first one is debt service, so this is things like paying off the bridge, paying off the old town hall, things like that. The next one is employee benefits, which I mentioned. The big driver is obviously health insurance costs. The next line item that we did was information technology. So this is our Novus Support System. It includes computer infrastructure, our internet bill, as well as our phone systems. The next one is maintenance, so that is another consolidated budget item. So previously, we would have one custodian with three different line items that would be under the library, the police department, and town hall maintenance. So we're consolidating that into one. Additionally, that's also for our waste disposal. Each department was responsible for paying their waste disposal to the transfer station. This year, we've consolidated it into one line item to reduce the paperwork. Town shared expenses, that's primarily our insurances for property, workers' comp, also unemployment. And then we have the Select Board and Town Administrator. I'll talk about education last, but we have the public safety items. Most of those are really minor increases. With the police department, we're looking at a bargaining year this year, so we're going to be meeting with the union very shortly. Additionally, the fire department, we've just hired our second full-time person outside of the chief, and we're looking to add another one very soon. The next group is our land use, which comprises the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. We're hoping with ARPA money running out this year, which primarily funded the Conservation Commission agent, as well as a consultant for the Planning Board, we're looking to consolidate that money and institute a land use coordinator, which would serve both the Planning Department and the Conservation Commission, but also some of the other departments work with Inspeccional Services, work with Historical Commission, work with the ZBA. Really, it's a position that would be an umbrella for all of our land use situations. Next, we have the Inspeccional Services. The first one is the Board of Health, and I did just want to recognize Jerry Swanson, who retired on Thursday after a very long career. We're hoping to get, or no one can really replace her, but we're hoping to get another person in the position very shortly. And then we have our Building Department as well. Those have just been small increases. Next up is we have our Financial Departments, Accounting Assessors, Finance Committee, and the Treasury Collector. We have our Public Works, which comprises our Highway Department. The next group is our Recreation Culture and Human Services, and you'll see some increases to some of them. Cemetery Commission, Council on Aging, and the library in particular. One thing I do want to point out with this budget is that we really tried to build a true budget to show the actual cost of what it is to operate a department. In the past, what we would do is we would take the actual operational costs and deduct them by any grants or outside money that we would receive, and then we would put that number onto the budget. So that never really showed the true cost of what it is. So what we did was, we actually put the true cost into the expense line, and then any of the grants or third-party money that we might receive would be put into the revenue account. So you can see that how much it actually cost, but then it's balanced out by money that we tried to bring in. And then finally, we have the enterprise funds. Now, they are listed here. They are enterprise funds, which means they have to be self-sufficient and they have their own budgets. So both the Water Department and the Transfer Station have their own articles tonight outside of this. So, the town meeting would have to vote to approve those two separately. And then finally, we have the Education section. The first one is Norris School, so this is the 4% increase. That represents the non-override budget. The town really had to work hard to get to that 4%. Some of the things that we had to do was tap into one-time funds from our ambulance stabilization fund. We had to reorganize some of our revenues from our ambulance fees. We had to reduce other line items, like our compensation line item, as well as our Finance Committee additional expense fund. We also had to reduce some hours and, you know, go line by line and look at places that we could kind of either shift the money or reduce the actual costs. Next up is the Hampshire Regional Assessment. Obviously, we're part of a regional school system, so this is how much the Town of Southampton owes for the education outside of Norris School. We have our town direct school costs, so these are outside of the Norris School and the Hampshire Regional, so these are things like vocational tuition, transportation, and transportation for vocation. And then finally, we have the Select Board and Town Administrator budgets. As I mentioned, there's consolidation of the land use coordinator into the Town Administrator, and then the Select Board budget remains the same. So that is the budget for, the Budget A for FY26. I think it's a responsible budget. There are a lot of changes this year, but we hope that people will take a look at it, go on the website, learn more about it, and we're going to continue that year after year.
Thank you. The people in the back, we have about a dozen or more seats up front for those of you who would want to sit down because it's going to be a long night, I think. Our budget historically has been split up into about nine categories. I would read a category name and amount. I'd listen. There'd be no debate, and we would vote unanimously with no debate. And we did this year after year after year. This year, with the budget change, there are 29 items, 29 segments of the budget, which would be impossible to vote on each one of them. So I'm going to adopt a system that other towns have used throughout the Commonwealth that I've experienced firsthand when I used to visit other towns, their town meetings. I'm going to read each one of the 29 groups, like Select Board, Town Administrator, Information Technology. As I read each one, I will wait to hear a hold. If one of you wants to talk on that subject, on that category of the budget, yell out "hold." We'll stop. You come up to the mic, and anybody else who wants to talk about that segment of the budget will. If I don't hear a hold, I'll go to the next item, and the next item. Whenever I hear a hold, I'll stop, and we'll have a discussion immediately. And once we get through the 29 items, we'll vote once on the total figure of the budget. All one person has to do is yell out "hold." Select Board. Town Administrator. Information Technology. Facilities Maintenance. Debt Service. Employee Benefits. Townwide Expenses. Hampshire Regional School District. Come on up to the mic. Introduce yourself, name and address.
Hello, my name is Michael Fredette. I live at 81 Gunn Road, Southampton, Massachusetts. I want to speak on behalf of the school systems. One thing that was pretty clear to me and apparent as I was hearing about potential cuts to our schools and potentially looking at having to pass an override to adequately fund our schools, the question that I asked was, how well is our school funded in Southampton? And how well does Southampton fund our schools? So as a comparison, I ran a simple search that's in my hand. It's a document that's public that anybody could run this search on. It is a per-pupil expenditure report in the state of Massachusetts. And so what it provides is it provides how much money per student we fund our students in education. So when I looked at the report, there are 363 towns and schools in this report. The average funding for each student across the state of Massachusetts is just north of $21,000. Southampton funds each of their students at $15,000, just north of $15,000. So the document's here because I'm not inventing these numbers. The other component that I thought about was, well, we don't really want to compare ourselves to the eastern part of the state because generally their budgets are larger, their funding and revenue sources are greater, so of course they fund per-pupil expenditures higher than Southampton. So I just really looked in the Hampshire Regional Schools, and I noticed that Hampshire Regional High School is funded at about $21,000 per pupil. Williamsburg is funded at about $21,000 per pupil at the state average or near that. Chesterfield-Goshen is lower. They're at just north of $18,000 per pupil. West Hampton's higher than the average. They're about $24,000 per pupil. So what I recognized was Southampton at $15,000 per pupil or just north of that is probably the school system that could least absorb budgetary cuts because there's nothing really extra in that budget when you want to fund students and their education. So I just wanted to be clear about how much we are spending in our community per pupil for education in comparison to the state and other communities around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on that part of the budget? No applause. Show your motion and your votes. Town school costs, tuition and transportation operations. Accounting. Assessors. Board of Health. Building. Cemetery Commission. Conservation Commission. Council on Aging. Come right up.
Jennifer Johnson, Rattle Hill Road. I'm just curious if someone can tell why there's an 84% increase in the Council on Aging's budget from last year, and what is the reason for that drastic increase in costs?
Somebody want to weigh in on that?
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, Council on Aging is one of those departments that is primarily grant-funded. So the large increase is due to actually showing the actual cost of having the employees work for the town. We have one employee and four part-time employees in the Council on Aging. Historically, that has always been reduced by the Council on Aging grants that they receive, which you can see in the revenue side of things. For another example, with Council on Aging, there's $2,500 in their programming budget, their operational costs. That's actually not the true cost. That's offset by fundraising by the Friends of the Senior Center, other state grants, things like that. So it's a large increase because of showing the actual cost and then the revenue of the grants.
Can I answer your question?
Not really.
Can you rephrase it to me, please?
Just so the people that were the employees, I guess, or whatever, the directors and whatever, were funded by grants but now are not, are now funded by the town? Is that what you're saying?
Last year's budget did not have the offsetting grant money in the revenues. This budget shows the money coming in for the revenue, so we show 100% of the expense.
Okay, okay. Yep.
You're good? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else want to talk about Council on Aging? We'll go on, say none. Finance Committee. Fire Department. Highway Department. Historical Commission. Open Space Committee. Parks Commission. Planning Board. Police Department. I saw a little person crawling on the floor back there. It took my attention away from me, so it's a funny moment. I wasn't expecting that. Town Clerk. Treasury Collector. Veterans Agent. Norris School. Step right up.
John Lumbera, 318 College Highway, and also Chair of the Norris School Committee. I want to speak against this proposed 405 reduced budget for Norris School, not because I'm opposed to the fiscal responsibility, but because I believe this budget is not responsible for our children, our educators, or the long-term strength of our community. Passing this reduced budget will result in the elimination of eight positions with additional hours cut and several more roles, the equivalent of a 12.5% reduction in school staff. Let me be clear about what that looks like in real terms. Two classroom teachers. That means larger class sizes, less individualized attention. One specialist, art, music, PE, or library, all essential to the well-rounded education, will be diminished. One special education teacher. These are legally mandated services. Reducing this role will strain our ability to meet the needs of those most valuable learners. An interventionist. This is a direct hit to the early literacy and math support. Three support staffs, the people who help... There we go. Hold on a second.
You're good.
I'll get control. Can I sit and finish? I don't like public speaking. An interventionist, this is a direct hit to early literacy and math support. The three support staff, the people who help keep our school running smoothly, our aides, paraprofessionals, clerical, custodial teams, will be stretched thin, and several other positions will see their hours cut to make up the difference. These are not theoretical cuts. They are actual planned reductions to provide who serve our children every day. We're not talking about trimming around the edges. This is a fundamental weakening of the fabric of Norris School. We all understand that resources are finite, but when we start sacrificing the people and programs that directly support our children's development academically, socially, and emotionally, we cross a line from being responsible to being reckless with our values. We cannot lose 12.5% of our school staff and pretend nothing will change. I urge you on behalf of our students, our teachers, and the future of Southampton to reject this reduced budget. Let's send a clear message that we are willing to invest in what matters, and we are not willing to let our school become the victim of short-term decisions with long-term consequences.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on Norris School? No applause.
Margaret Larson, David Street. I'm also a member of the Southampton School Committee. John was more prepared than I am and did an excellent job. I would like to talk this about on a more personal level.
A little closer, Margaret.
Sure. So my child went through the Southampton School District, and she benefited from a fully-staffed school. She benefited from smaller class sizes and specials that were available to her that in turn prepared her for Hampshire Regional, and it prepared her for college. And she's graduating in a few weeks. So I urge our community to support our local schools, our local school, and to understand the ramifications of losing 10 staff members. This is not only about the kids in the school. It's about the livelihoods of our teachers. It's about our principal being able to fully manage what's happening in the school. And it's about our students' ability to progress and to become. And we have made a major investment in our neurodiverse program for all of our students who are on the autism spectrum, as is my child. And she would have benefited tremendously from having that in elementary school, and that wasn't available at the time. So now we have students coming in that we can support fully, and we can integrate into our mainstream classrooms and prepare them for life beyond elementary school. And I urge our community to continue to support our schools in the way that they have.
Good evening. Dylan Maudslay, 22 Caitlin Way.
A little closer, I can't hear you.
Dylan Maudslay, 22 Caitlin Way, also a member of the Southampton School Committee Vice Chair. In addition to everything that's been said, I really want to focus in specifically on the special education needs that we have here. There's cuts to a lot of the programs that support our most vulnerable students. And one of the most driving factors that affects a school budget could often be special education services, both in district and out of district. And I think voting for this budget with only a 4% increase and slashing the supports that we have in our schools and reducing our, and increasing our classroom sizes, individualized attention, only puts us at risk for higher out-of-district placement costs. So even if we look at this and we kind of ignore the moral and ethical obligation that we have to our most vulnerable students and members of our community, fiscally, it's not a smart decision to make these cuts because in the long term, it could very well likely cost the school and town more money because we're unable to provide the services that those students need within our district. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause, please.
Jennifer Johnson, Rattle Hill Road. I did not grow up in this area. I am from out east. So when my fiancee at the time asked me if I wanted to build a house on land in Southampton, my first question was, what is the school system like? Because that's the most important thing. Eventually, we'll have kids, and if it's a crappy school system, I'm not going to build a house here. I don't want to live in a town where I have to constantly worry about my children's education or constantly think of where else can I send my kids because what's in town is not adequate. So that's going to be on a lot of people's mind. On top of that, there are a lot of new families coming in, and cutting 12% and 1/2% of the workforce of this school is a drastic detriment. I am here, more so than maybe any of my other committee members, every day. I pick my kids up, I drop my kids off, I talk to the principals, I talk to the teachers. I'm in the school, reading books with the kids in my son's preschool class, kindergarten class. My kid benefited from special education in this school and still does. He came to pre-K at 3 with a talking device because he was basically nonverbal to everyone but me. Within six months of preschool, he had a full language and could be understood by most people. This is not the place to fix the budget. There has to be other places that the money can come from, or we have to be willing to put the extra money in because it's only going to hurt us in the long run, like Dylan said, special ed costs. But the growth of the town is going to also go down, which means less tax revenue.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Hello, Dan LaValle, 78 Glendale. I guess I'm just kind of asking to explain what a yes or no vote means. I find it a little confusing as there are two columns for A and B. So how does voting yes or no on A impact B?
We're voting on column A.
Okay, so if I...
That's the only discussion that we're having right now is to vote on column A.
So if I voted against column A, would we still vote on column B?
We're going to vote on column A, and then we're going to discuss and vote on the override separately. Can I answer your question? The only difference in column B is the override.
Jonathan J., Coleman Road.
A little closer.
Jonathan J., Coleman Road. He wasn't the only person confused. I'm hearing conflicting things and is also conflicting with what is written here. So I think someone needs to explain quite clearly what a vote on A means. The first speaker, John Lausma, in favor, who spoke on this, indicated that he was against the budget, Budget A, and he was urging a no vote, unless I misunderstood him. It's different from what some people are saying, and it's different from what's written here. So let's have it explained once and for all, who's someone who wrote this or understands what's supposed to be done? Because some people are going to be voting the exact opposite of what they want based on what people, who they think they are hearing tonight. It's very confusing.
Our budget has changed in format of presentation to the town voters. Historically, we would have nine categories. This year was broken out to 29 categories, and we're going through what's called a hold procedure, and we're going to be voting on the whole budget, one vote, rather than voting individually on the nine separate sections. So it would be one vote on the total. Once we vote on the budget, then we discuss this override, and then we vote on the override.
Hi, I'm Jerry Jennings on Old County Road. What happens if we do not pass the first vote on Budget A?
We have a special town meeting.
Okay, would we still vote on the override?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, could I just expand on that question a little bit? If Budget A fails, the procedure is, under state law, we go to a 1/12 budget, and the select board and finance committee will gather immediately within public posting period, and will come up, after listening to the audience, will come up with another presentation of the budget to come forward. Regardless of how A goes, there will be an option, an opportunity to vote on B.
That's a better answer than I gave you, I trust.
Mark Cassis, 19 Fomer Road. I'm going to ask the question a slightly different way. If someone wanted to support an increased budget for the schools, what do we need to vote on Section A? And Section B may be another discussion.
You want to increase the section, the Budget A?
If someone wants to support not the budget that was proposed, a 4% increase, but a higher budget, what do town members need to vote on Section A that's being presented now?
You can vote to consider raising and lowering the figure about 10%-ish, but anything above that or below that would be severe, and it would be unfair to those who wouldn't be expecting it and not come to the meeting today by our tradition.
But specifically, what do I need to vote, or someone else in the audience, to support a higher budget?
John?
So conceptually, think of it this way. If you vote to approve A, you're setting the base at a 4.05 increase. If you vote against A, and so far Norris is the only issue that's come up, you're saying 4.05 is too low. Now, you may not be in favor of the full override, but you're saying 4.05 is too low, and you're instructing the select board and finance committee to either go create a different plan that is greater than 4.05, and then we can have the conversation of whether the override is sufficient or insufficient.
Answer your question, Mark?
What's confusing everybody is, respectfully, what you said was...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry. Aaron Sims, 42 Ledmine Road. What's confusing everybody, I think, is that your speech, which I very much agreed with, said vote "no," but what is on the text is a yes vote for this article would approve Budget A, and then forward Budget B for an override vote. That makes sense to me. You vote on A, it's the baseline. You then can go to B, vote on B as an override.
And you're correct. My position is 4.05 is too low for a baseline. So therefore, I reject that, and I believe there may be other areas within the budget where funds could be shifted to support the school if we can't get to the full 18% with the override.
Our concern is if we vote "no" on A, it's written as if you then stop and don't go for the override. So we need some clarification on sequence if we wanted to allow an override. Thank you.
I'm going to recess for about three minutes. Please be seated. Break is over. Thank you. Excellent questions. We're going to be voting on the budget. Period. If we vote in favor of the budget, we will then go and vote on the override. If you vote the budget down, we will then go to vote on Budget A with the override. Or you get another bite at the apple. Is that clear? We're going to, we're going to have one vote on the budget. We're going to have one vote on the budget, Budget A, as presented to you. Yea or nay? The majority votes yea, then we simply go to the next motion under Article 1, and we discuss and vote on the override. If we vote, if you vote nay by majority on the budget, we will then go to the If we vote, if you vote nay, by majority, on the budget, we will then go to the override and combine it with the Budget A. You can call the Budget B with the override, if you will. I think that's less confusing.
Can I ask a question on this, please, Robert?
Sure.
Thank you. So just to be clear, was the budget as presented in the questions you're proposing today the same as it's presented as the articles in the warrant sheet?
Yes.
Is the, I would disagree with that. Is it your position as moderator that you've split the budgets into Budget A versus Budget B?
I requested two motions, yes.
Yes, thank you. Just, I just want to be clear, I'm not challenging here, I just want clarity. So in the way it was written, in the warrant sheets that everyone has in front of them, there is a single motion before them, is that correct?
Actually, there's two together. The, the word "move" is used twice, and that's a double motion.
But there is, it's a double motion with a single answer of a yes or a no vote, correct?
To answer your question, the moderator has divided the question, a single motion for the last 15 years, in nine categories, even though it wasn't written as such in the motion.
I understand that. I think I'm trying, I'm just trying to clarify some confusion here.
Yes.
So in the, in the packet that everyone has, I don't have mine with me, it has in there a single motion with two movements, I understand it's a double motion, and it says a yes vote-
Thanks, Rondo.
-and a no vote, correct?
Sorry?
There's a yes and a no, and that is in reference to both Budgets A and B.
That's in summary, that's not what we're voting on.
I understand that's not what we're voting on. I'm trying to clarify, so that we can understand-
It's different, yes, it is.
Correct. So we have, it's slightly different on what we're doing here today. So if we vote yes on the first part of that motion, which is not, which is the first paragraph of the motion in the warrant-
Yes.
-we pass a baseline budget with a 4.05% increase to Norris, plus everything else for every other town department, correct?
Yes.
A no vote on that would reject that budget, and then we would vote on Budget B in its entirety, as it's listed in here, which is the contingent budget, which would be the 15.93% increase to Norris, plus all the other town departments, is that correct?
Which are the same as Budget A, yes.
Correct. So a yes vote on A, we move on to B, is that correct?
Correct.
A no vote on A, we move on to B, is that correct?
Well, you have the defining B.
As it is stated in the warrant article that was presented-
No.
-which-
No. If the vote is yes, majority for A, we then go to the override, period.
Right, I understand, so, right. So we, if we vote yes on A, we get this budget, we then move on to specifically the override in B.
Yes.
Correct. If we vote no on A, and then we, we, we move on to B in the entirety of the budget with the override baked in.
Correct.
Okay. If Budget B will then will automatically go on the, if it passes, this is a contingent question, if it passes here tonight, Budget B with the override, the override portion will go on the ballot for May 20th.
The override goes on the, on the ballot.
On the ballot for May 20th.
The override itself.
Correct. If it passes at the May 20th meeting, we have a budget in its entirety, correct? If it fails on the 20th of May, we then have to come back for a special town meeting and come up with a new budget for the town.
Yes.
Okay, is that-
He deserves the applause. Great. Teamwork, thank you. All right, we're going to vote on the budget. Under A, $23,527,778.57. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. We're going to count. Counters? Take whatever cards you were given. All those in favor, please raise them high, for the green is showing me. Counters up front, please. Counters will count from the front to the back. We're counting yays, not nays. All those in favor, raise your cards. Hold them high. Two counters count each section, they compare numbers. If they agree, they tell, go to the mic and tell us all at the same time. If not, they recount. Okay, hold them high, recounting.
Forty?
Forty, okay. Put your hands down now. Thank you. And you count these up front too, right? Okay.
Forty-three.
Forty-three? Anybody else? We're all counted? Okay, those opposed, raise your cards. The red ones.
Thirty-nine.
Put your hands down. Put your hands down. Thank you. Put your hands down. Put your hands down. Thank you. On this side here, raise your card. Raise your cards. This side here, raise your cards.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four?
That's right.
Eighty-three ayes and 113 ayes. The budget fails. We will now have a motion for the rest of Article I, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move to further raise and appropriate from taxation the additional sum of $897,069 for Norris Elementary School. The amounts shown in the column captioned Fiscal 26 Budget B with contingent appropriations. Said supplemental appropriation contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Chris, I'm going to have you read the whole motion to both parts.
Okay, we're all learning as we go here, folks. Thanks for your patience. All right, I'm going to reread that motion, I'm told that I need to reread the entire motion, so that they're tied together. So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $23,527,778.57 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal year '26. All is shown in the town's annual budget, budget, annual operating budget, and identified in the column labeled FY '26 Recommended Budget A Noncontingent Appropriations. And to fund this appropriation, $16,166,532.63 be raised from taxes, $17,500 transferred from WPAT loan, $269,090.40 be transferred from ambulance fees, and $97,184.60 be transferred from ambulance stabilization. And move further to raise and appropriate from taxation the additional sum of $897,69 for Norris Elementary School. The amounts shown in column captioned FY '26 Budget B with contingent appropriations. Said supplemental appropriation contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
That combines our budget and the override. Who would like to speak on that, please?
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Vito Peron, I'm the Superintendent of Schools. I support Article I in its entirety. It reflects more than a financial decision, it's a statement of priorities. Budget B, supported by the proposed override, would allow Norris Elementary School to continue delivering the level of service our students deserve and our families expect. The stakes are incredibly high, academically and operationally. Without the override, reductions will directly and detrimentally affect teaching and learning. Core classroom instruction will be diminished and disrupted, increasing class sizes. Specials like art, music, PE, and library time will be reduced, narrowing curricular activities. Special education staffing will be stretched, pressurizing, pressuring compliance and limiting student support. Literacy and math interventions for struggling learners will be scaled back, impacting student outcomes negatively. Essential support staff will be cut or reduced, limiting integral services. Budget B doesn't reflect extravagant growth, wasteful spending, or lavish requests. It simply reflects the preservation of level services. It does not add, it protects. It keeps our school whole. Without it, the quality of education we've worked so hard to build will erode. This override helps stabilize not only our classrooms, but the broader community of Southampton. Please support Article I in its entirety, and let the voters decide this important question on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aliza Pluta, Principal here at Norris School. I'd like to speak in support of the Budget B override budget. Our school looks very different today than it did 20 years ago. Education has evolved, and so have the needs of our students. We now serve a wider range of learners, including many students with disabilities, who require individualized and differentiated support in order to make meaningful progress. In response, we have spent several years developing a tiered intervention support system that ensures all students get what they need, when they need it. This system is driven by student data, relies heavily on skilled intervention teachers in English, language, arts, and math. These teachers play a critical role in providing targeted instruction to help students close gaps before these challenges require special education services. Without these supports, we risk identifying more students for IEPs, which is very costly. Many students, when given timely interventions, are able to make significant progress in a short period of time and continue on a successful path without long-term specialized support. We've also created a robust in-district program to support students with disabilities within our own school. This allows them to learn alongside their peers, neighbors, and friends, remaining part of the community they've grown up in, rather than being placed in programs outside of town. And more costly. In addition to academic and social emotional supports, our school has long been known as a quaint, small community school, with enriching programs such as art, music, library, and physical education. With enriching program, these programs are part of what makes our school special. However, if the override does not pass, we stand to lose this from our school. A loss that would deeply impact our students' educational experience and the well-rounded environment we've worked so hard to preserve. We also stand to lose funds for classroom curriculum materials, professional development for teachers, and essential school supplies, like paper, pencils, and other basic tools. This will in turn shift the financial burden to families, as we have to ask parents for more donations just to ensure teachers have what they need to do their jobs effectively. Over the 11 years that I have been principal at Norris School, we have unfulfilled classroom teacher positions when they retire, in order to have a reading and math intervention program. When I started, we had four, when I started here 11 years ago, we had four classes at every grade level. We currently have three classes at every grade level in grades 3 through 6. If the override does not pass, we will continue with cuts, and kindergarten and first grade would also go down to three classes as well. We currently have 63 students slated to come to kindergarten at Norris in the fall. If we have three classes, that's 21 kids in each class. Doesn't seem like a lot, however, with all of the different needs that we have in kindergarten, it's going to be very hard to support those students. This inclusive and proactive approach that we've been doing all of these years benefits all students, but it requires adequate funding. The support we are asking for through the budget override is essential to sustain and strengthen this system. It is an investment in our children, our educators, and our community's future.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this? Any pros, any cons? Seeing none? Go ahead, Tammy. I can see everyone from here.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. I want to make sure, Mr. Moderator, that if we vote yes for the override, that means it goes on the ballot and the whole town gets to vote on this, it's not just-
That is correct.
Okay. And if it goes to the whole town and it fails, then our town has to have more expenses paid out to have a whole nother special town meeting, with people coming and being paid to be here, and getting the TV crews in and all that, all over again. Because the first one failed.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Yeah? Yes. Brian Riley, KP Law.
Oh, it's Town Council. Sorry to make this go even longer, but the way the motion that was read that's on the floor right now appropriated twenty-three million and change...
A little closer to the mic.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The motion that was read now would put twenty-three million and change to the entire town budget, including Norris School, at that four percent figure. Then the second piece of the motion made the eight hundred ninety-seven thousand contingent on the override passing.
Yes.
So if at the ballot...
The ballot would only be for the override.
Correct. But if that override question fails, you still have your whole town budget, but Norris would only be at that four percent.
Thank you for clarifying, yes.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to hold another town meeting in June.
Because we're voting on Budget B, which is Budget A plus the override. So in one vote, we're voting on the budget and the override. That passes, only the override itself goes to the election Tuesday, the twentieth of May. We good? Okay, we're going to vote. Seeing none, we're going to vote on Fiscal Twenty-Six Budget B with contingent appropriation for the amount of twenty-four million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Two, please? For Motion One.
That the town fix the annual fifty-two week salary of the town clerk at an amount of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Oh, effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made, I didn't call for a second yet. There's two motions here, we're doing one at a time. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this? By the way, we have a budget.
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. As I mentioned earlier, our goal this year is to provide more transparency for our budgets, for our personnel, for all of the operational costs of the town. Most towns and cities in Massachusetts that have town meeting actually do a separate article for the compensation for elected officials. This mirrors what other cities and towns do. Only town meeting can approve the compensation for an elected official, and this would mirror what was just approved in the previous article, the budget article. So, in an effort to be more transparent, this actually separates it out from when it used to be in just the budget article combined with everything else.
Okay. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any comments? Seeing none, will vote on the first motion for Article Two. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for, under Article Two, Motion One passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for the second one, please?
That the town fix the annual fifty-two week salary of the treasurer collector at an amount of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars and four cents, effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this? Anyone? If not, will vote. All in favor of the motion? Motion Two, for Article Two. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion Two for Article Two passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Three, please?
Mr. Moderator.
Mic works.
Move that the town vote to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Three of the warrant for the May sixth, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Tim Gudette, one thirty-eighth Valley Road, Board of Water Commissioners. Just want to remind everyone that the Water Department works as an enterprise budget, meaning that the revenues come from user fees and it's not funded from tax levy. The other point I'll just make is that the total, it's like one percent higher than last year.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any other comments, any questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article Three. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Three passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote the budget of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article Four of the warrant for the May sixth, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting.
Motion is... No, I didn't call for a second yet. Motion is made and the total is actually two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. May I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this motion for Article Four?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So I just want to ensure that I don't need an amendment in order to correct the total and the amount that's going to be appropriated from Transfer Station Enterprise revenues? Because that total is the same. There was an arithmetic error in the article. I have the, I have the amendments already written out in duplicate.
Good question. Yeah. Yeah.
The correct number, forty-one thousand, three seventy-nine point four-four, plus one hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars equals two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents.
No. Two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. For both? Yes, okay.
So make that amendment. We have amendment, we have an amendment on floor in a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have amendment in a second. Changing the number, propose to change the number on the warrant. We're changing it to two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Voting on the amended change. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The amendment passes unanimously. Now we're going to vote on the motion for Article Four. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion, under amended motion for Article Four passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer one hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents from free cash to the accounts designated for snow removal within the Highway Department.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. A long time ago, when I was young, I used to watch News Forty and listen to Five Sixty AM with much glee to hear that school is canceled. But now, as a parent, a taxpayer, and a municipal manager, I don't get as excited because it costs a lot of money. So what this article does is transfer from free cash to make up for the cost, essentially deficit spending, for our snow removal budget. In Massachusetts, the only line item that we're allowed to deficit spend is for snow removal. It's a common practice. And again, in transparency, showing the exact amount that we actually spend in the snow removal costs, this would actually transfer from free cash into the snow removal budgets. In the past, if there was an overage or a deficit and then we needed to make it up, we would take a little bit of money from like road maintenance and other things. And that wasn't really good practice for two reasons. The first, it reduces the amount that we actually spend for those designated items. So it would reduce the road maintenance cost. And secondly, it would discourage our Highway Department from spending that money till the very end of the year because as in New England, we don't know what snow we're going to get tomorrow, never mind over a whole season. So this would just pay for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to motion on Article Five? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion under Article Five passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund.
We amended the figure in the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This money would transfer a little over forty-three thousand dollars into our Capital Stabilization Fund to fund a lot of the capital projects that you're going to be seeing later on in the articles.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion under Article Six. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Six passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Seven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amended sum of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents from free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Once again, we've amended the figure in the motion. May I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. So this motion would transfer money from our free cash into our Operational Stabilization Fund, better known as our Rainy Day Fund, for the first time in, at least since I know that it would be over a million dollars. Now, that might seem like a lot, but that's really only four to five percent of our annual budget. The recommended Department of Local Services is actually ten to twelve percent. So this is a step in the right direction. It's fiscally responsible, but we've got a little bit of way to go, but this is a good step.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition in the motion on Article Seven? Any other comments? Come right up to the mic. Just tilt it down.
Erin Dufresne, East Street. I just want to know, with the percentages that are listed in each of these, in the summary, it says percentage being moved, and then we've amended the amount. Has the percentage being moved also changed?
Yes, that answer your question? Great. He's pointing to John.
So, so backing up to Article Six, it's thirty percent of the available free cash left over after paying the deficits. Article Seven is sixty percent. And the OPEB, Article Eight, which we'll get to, is ten percent.
That answer your question better? Oh, good, thumbs up. Thank you. Anybody want to comment on the motion for Article Seven? Go ahead, Michael.
Mike Diller, eighty-eight High Street. I'm just confused. At least in the copy I have, both Article Six and Article Seven specify transfers of free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund. I don't see any distinction between Capital Stabilization and Operational Stabilization.
I was going to, after that vote, I was going to do a point of order to point that very thing out. I think we have to back up to Article Six because there's a typo in the motion. It specifies in the motion that it's capital, not the operational. So what was read into the record has the wrong account.
Okay.
On Article Six.
We're going to vote on a motion for Article Seven. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Seven passes unanimously.
Point of order, I move to reconsider Article Six.
We have a policy not to reconsider unless there's a great reason. And I understand the reason is there's a improper name for the...
We read into the record the wrong stabilization account.
Okay. I'll take that under account and let's do that. Describe how we're changing the name.
So I would amend the motion to identify the Operating Stabilization Fund and not the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Thank you, Steve. Motion for Article Eight, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and six cents from free cash to the other post-employment benefits account.
And again, we've changed the figure in the motion. We have a motion for Article Eight, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this, please? You're getting your exercise.
So this article would transfer a little over fourteen thousand dollars into our OPEB account. The reason for some of the discrepancies between what's listed in the warrant and what the actual free cash is, we just got free cash certified last week. One of the issues was that there are some years-old grants that are outstanding that the state had to reduce from that. So that required us to reappropriate the money and reduce it.
Great, thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Michael.
Mike Diller, eighty-eight High. I actually don't know if I can ask this question, but it would be helpful to me at least to understand what the total available free cash is and how in percentage terms it's being allocated between Article Five and Nine. And I know I may not be able to ask that question, but I thought I'd try. Because the numbers haven't added up, the numbers haven't added up for me so far.
Anybody have an answer for that?
Fiscal year twenty-five free cash started with a balance of six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Then through a series of offsets or reductions to the free cash because of negative balances on the balance, on the books that had to be zeroed out, that reduced that number by roughly two hundred and two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We then applied the next motion that's coming up, withdrew one hundred and fifty thousand, which we'll get to on the next motion. And then we withdrew the one hundred and eighteen thousand, two seventy-one, thirty-nine that we already approved for snow removal, leaving an available balance to be, to be shifted of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one thirty-four point six one. We have a bylaw that highly recommends that thirty percent of that number go to operations, thirty-five percent to capital, ten percent to OPEB, leaving twenty-five percent left over to be designated as the Select Board and Finance Committee recommend. However, because of how late in the year we are, this would normally happen in September. But how late we are in the year, we're just closing it out so we can start working on next year's free cash. Which is why the twenty-five that is undesignated was added to the capital of thirty-five to get to the sixty percent to go into that account.
That answer your question? Great, thank you. Any other comments? The motion for Article Eight, seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, the motion Article Eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Eight passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars even from free cash to the... fifty thousand dollars even from free cash to Norris Elementary School account for central office expenses.
We've modified the amount in the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on motion for Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I have two questions about the motion. The first is that it specifically references um amounts not previously assessed, and this particular amount is for an item that was assessed to the Norris School budget for central office costs. It was neither invoiced appropriately or recognized appropriately on Southampton's end that this needed to be paid. The total amount is four hundred and fifty four thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars and twenty three cents, of which we are acknowledging that one hundred and fifty thousand can be paid in this year. My question is, A, it was previously assessed, so I'm confused about that part of the motion. Um, the second is there is no reference in the motion to the fact that more is owed to Hampshire Regional, which covered the cost for central office. So I would like that addressed, thank you.
We have a two-part question, who would like to take that? Select Board Member John Lumber.
So a little context here on what this, the bigger picture, as Margaret alluded to on what this is, Mr. Moderator, is this is a result of fiscal year twenty five budget that was approved had a portion of the Norris Elementary School budget, four hundred and fifty four thousand, it was, it was a little more than that, there was, I believe, thirty seven thousand on top of that, that was assessed to Norris for its portion, percentage of portion of central office work. In fiscal year twenty five, no invoices were forwarded to our, to our town accountant to alleviate those numbers and to pay those bills. Twenty twenty five closes, that money falls out as unencumbered, comes into free cash, which is part of that bigger number that we've just gone through. Um, and because of the forensic work that's ongoing at central office over the past three years worth of work that they're trying to get through, this issue came to light. And just last night, the Hampshire, under advice of legal counsel, Hampshire Regional um School Committee Chair was authorized to speak with the Norris Chair to enter into what will hopefully be repayment terms. That was last night, they're meeting in it at ten, it's with the lawyers today. I imagine by tomorrow, the Select Board and Finance Committee will have something before them to consider. But in broad strokes, we owe four hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. We, there's going to be, this article that's before us now is a hundred and fifty thousand of that. The outline of the agreement that the two chairs came to is that next year, we, if our free cash is certified above six hundred thousand dollars, we would, we would pay the remaining balance of the three oh four. If it's certified below six hundred thousand, we would commit to paying two hundred, and then that one oh four would fall into the third year.
Great, thank you. Answer your question, both? Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Maureen Gro Nature Lane, can you explain why that's not coming out of operational stabilization and what is the current balance in operational stabilization?
Okay, you would like to answer that, please?
Town accountant? Current balance with the Article Six transfer would be.
Bradley, your town accountant would answer the question.
Bradley Oxon, town accountant. The current balance for operating stabilization is one million, two thousand, four hundred and thirty five dollars, thirteen cents.
That, can you hear that?
That's another great question. Uh, the Select Board debated that and we took the recommendation of the Town Administrator to opt to defer the repayment over three years instead of taking a one-time hit to um to stabilization account.
Thank you, answer your question? Good. Any other? Sure, go to Mike.
Hello, Don Scaparotti, um, the Business Administrator for Hampshire Regional. I understood everything that um Mr. Lumber said, just one point of clarification, it's not FY twenty five, it's FY twenty four. So these were bills that were incurred and paid on behalf of Southampton by Hampshire Regional in FY twenty four. They were never invoiced timely, they were discovered in FY twenty five, and we have reached this agreement to provide some grace to the town of Southampton to repay that to Hampshire Regional.
Great.
As he described, as he described, but it's FY twenty four.
Thank you.
Arthur Lawrence, one one three Crooked Ledge Road. Um, this is, uh, from what I understand is a, for some of this, for forensic auditing, is that correct? And if that is correct, um, forensic means, could mean criminal. Um, also, was there any clawbacks from people who were let go and maybe had gotten money to uh hasten their uh leaving the system? Um, this, this sounds very, very fishy to me, all this, and this goes, I know goes back a couple of years. And I do know, uh, I'm pretty sure that somebody was fired over all, all of this.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear some information on that.
Thank you.
Uh, the first part of that, the fiscal year twenty five budget was the first time there was an allocation for what we're calling forensic accounting or the deep dive, and I think that was ninety five thousand. This budget that we just approved has another hundred and something in there, and in, it is hoped that this will be the last year that we have to make the appropriation for it. So that the incident that occurred was prior to us spending any money to dig into this. Um, I don't have knowledge to the second part of the question, as I don't sit on that school committee.
Okay, thank you. Can I answer your question? Margaret?
Margaret Larson, uh, I am the Southampton Rep to Hampshire Regional, and I've been on Hampshire Regional School Committee for ten years. And uh, I can assure you that while there was a lot of turnover in central office and a bit of chaos as people came and left, there was no malfeasance that has been discovered.
Thank you. Any other comments? Step right up. Get in line.
Maureen Gro Nature Lane, um, just wondering if the audit was done and completed for that fiscal year and why that wasn't picked up if that was the case? And my understanding is that the Department of Revenue says you're not supposed to use free cash to balance the budget, so I'm just still concerned that this isn't coming out of operational stabilization if there's over a million dollars in there.
Thank you. Would I like to reply to that? Who would like to answer that question? You can do it.
I think, Don, can you answer the piece as to whether or not the audit has been done for fiscal year twenty five?
Don Scaparotti, Business Administrator, I can answer the first part. No, the audit for FY twenty four has not occurred. It is scheduled.
Okay.
I had another comment, but I don't know the procedure.
You can comment.
Okay, thank you. So for FY twenty four, I just wanted to address the previous speaker's um concern about what this uh payment is for. And it is customary for each elementary school who receives services from the central office. Such services include the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the director of special education, um, the business office, so the paying of payroll and accounts payable, et cetera. And all of those costs are accumulated and assessed to each of the three municipal schools within the larger Hampshire Regional District. So those costs weren't for forensic activity, those were for services that were delivered on behalf of the Norris School by those individuals and that collective. That, since the Norris School has the preponderance of students in the district, it's based on the number of students, and so it's a large amount, the four hundred and ninety two, it's a certain percentage based on the student enrollment. Um, and, and that's what those were for.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none will vote on the motion for Article Nine. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Nine passes by majority. Mayor motion for Article Ten, please.
Mr. Moderator, move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of three hundred and sixty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty four dollars and fifty cents from the capital stabilization fund to the Norris School, Library, Cemetery Commission, Fire, and Police Accounts to fund the approved projects by the Capital Improvement Committee as listed in Article Ten of the May sixth, twenty twenty five Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. Uh, as you can see from the list in Article Ten, uh, these capital projects approved by the Capital Committee, um, are really the basic stuff. We have two police cruisers, which are necessary. Uh, we have repairs to the Norris Library and uh Norris Gym Doors. Um, we need the uh Fire SCBA compressor for the Fire Department as well as a new pickup truck, um, new flooring for our kindergarten class, and then finally cemetery software. Uh, that will help update the Cemetery Commission currently, we have hundreds of years of history uh just written in a book, uh, and that needs to be updated and preserved for future generations.
Thank you. Ian?
Mr. Moderator, Ian Ellingsworth, Police Chief. Relative to the uh police requests, these are to replace two cars, uh, line cars, patrol cars. One's a two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer with a hundred and seventy seven thousand miles on it. Um, another's a two thousand and nineteen Ford Explorer with a hundred and sixty nine thousand miles on it. The cars average about twenty six thousand miles a year, so um if they don't get replaced, they'll be in the two hundred thousands by next year.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak against this motion under Article Ten? Any other comments? Please go right ahead.
Town accountant Bradley Oxon, uh, I did the math a few times and the total is actually three hundred and sixty seven thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars, fifty cents.
Give us that, give me that total again.
The total is three hundred and sixty six, three hundred and sixty seven thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars, fifty cents.
Okay, you, you want to make an amendment to that mo- you want, we have an amendment to the motion under Article Ten with that figure? Who would like to second that amendment? Uh, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none will vote on the amendment, we're revising the figure, not voting on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying no. Amendment passes by majority, now we have an amended motion. Any other comments? Questions, seeing none, will vote on the amended motion for Article Ten. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The amended motion passes unanimously. Mayor motion for Article Eleven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town rescind previously approved capital projects as listed in Article eighteen of the May sixth, twenty twenty five Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. Uh, so this article along with the next one, uh, is really the town taking the initiative to look at its books, uh, to, to kind of clean everything up, uh, do an internal audit ourselves and look at our capital, our additional special accounts, our grant accounts. Um, so essentially what this is doing is the first step in cleaning a lot of, lot of, lot of items that either haven't been expended or have been expended and have um reserves left on them for previous capital projects. Um, this would rescind it and then send it back to our capital, our capital fund. Um, one of the things that I want to just note is that a lot of these are three, four, five, and even six years old, so it just helps it get off the books.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition?
Point of order, I move to amend the motion that was read into the record.
Sure.
It references the incorrect article. It was not Article eighteen, it was Article eleven. So I'd, I'd make the amendment to strike Article eighteen and in its place, insert Article eleven.
Okay, we have an amendment to change Article eighteen to nine in the motion.
To eleven, to eleven.
To eleven. Got it. Oh, I got you. I have a second on the amendment.
Second.
We have an amendment to the motion and a second. Any comments, discussion? Will vote on the amendment changing the number of the article? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. All right, we have an amended motion successfully. Now we're going to vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion on Article Eleven, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The amended motion for Article Eleven passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Twelve, please?
Uh, move that the town rescind Article Twelve of the December fifth, twenty twenty three Special Town Meeting authorizing the borrowing of eighty nine thousand dollars for a new school van.
Love that energy and spirit. We have a motion to air a second. Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Uh, this item in uh twenty twenty three, we came before the uh town body as we were entertaining the potential of getting a lease or borrowing for the very bright cherry red elementary van that we have over there now. Um, we ended up having available funds within the um pre-K account, and so no borrowing was needed. We don't, we don't need the authorization any longer.
Thank you. Yes, go right up to the mic. What is your point of order?
Uh, Susan Sussman, Golden Circle, as read, he said Article Twelve and it says Article Thirteen.
We have the motion under Article Twelve now.
On Article Twelve, yes, but the motion.
Yeah, sorry.
It says rescind Article.
Right.
But he said Article.
Yeah, sorry, it's a correction. Yeah, it's a correction, yeah. It should be, sorry, it was Article Thirteen of the December fifth, twenty twenty three Special Town Meeting. So, we, we read it wrong, it's correct. My mistake, too.
Mike Giller, eighty eight High, another apparent discrepancy. Um, so uh.
Hey, we're all in this together.
The second column reads amount ninety eight thousand, but the motion reads eighty nine thousand.
That's correct. So is it eighty nine as read? Or should it be ninety eight as indicated in the article? If it's eighty nine as read, we made a correct motion, but if it's ninety eight, we need to make amendment to the motion under Article Twelve. We like the teamwork, thank you. We're checking. Thanks for bringing the young ones, they made me laugh back there. I'll take a motion to table this to a later point in our meeting. Motion made to table this to a later part of the meeting, second? All in favor of tabling it, Article Twelve for later, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes unanimously, we'll table it. Let's go on to motion for Article Thirteen, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section Forty-Five and Forty-Seven, and establish a Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds to manage all trust funds held by the town unless otherwise provided by the donor or by law.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
John Lumbro, Select Board. This article, as well as the next article, was brought forward in conjunction with our current treasurer-collector in the Select Board. This may sound like a technical article, but it's actually a smart, forward-thinking step to strengthen how our town manages its trust funds. Things like scholarships, cemetery funds, other dedicated gifts that have been entrusted to us over the years. Right now, our treasurer-collector is responsible for these funds, and I want to make it clear, this article has her full support. This isn't about taking authority away, it's about adding structure and support to make sure these funds are managed with the highest level of care and oversight. Here's why it makes sense. First, it creates a focus and accountable board dedicated to ensuring these funds are managed responsibly, invested prudently, and used in line with the donor's intent. Second, it increases transparency. The board would post agendas, hold public meetings, and provide regular updates so the community knows how these funds are being handled. Third, it brings us in line with best practices used in many other towns across Massachusetts. This is a common sense governance model that works well elsewhere. And lastly, this structure gives us the chance to engage residents with financial expertise or interest in serving their community, put local talent to work for the benefit of all. To be clear, this article does not add cost or bureaucracy, it simply creates a better system to manage funds that matter and honors the trust placed in us by past donors.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition for the motion under Article Thirteen? Any questions, comments?
Mike Dealer, eighty-eight high, still too short. How much money is at stake in these trust funds, and how are those currently managed?
Question, Michael, thank you.
There's, outside of the stabilization accounts that we've already spoke about tonight, there's roughly $500,000 in other, other funds, non-general fund or tax receipts. And they're currently invested through Bartholomew, who's an outside independent registered
Thank you. Answer your question. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article Thirteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Fourteen, please?
We move that the town vote, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapters Forty-One, Section One B, that the members of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds shall be appointed by the Select Board.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, in an ideal world, every board would have a competitive election, but the reality is that we often struggle to fill open seats now. By making these appointments, we ensure that positions don't go unfilled and that qualified individuals with relevant financial experience can be brought in to serve. It also creates alignment with, with other fiscal oversight roles in town government, which are already appointed. This adds consistency and flexibility, especially for a specialized board like this one.
Thank you. Anyone who speaks in opposition to the motion for Article Fourteen, please? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article Fourteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Fourteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Fifteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $65,000 from the retained earnings line to the Water Enterprise Fund Line to FY 2026, sixty-one dash Water Enterprise Fund Line.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Tim Grede, one thirty-eight Valley Road, Board of Water Commissioners. So, so this article is, it's not in our normal budget because it's kind of a one-time activity to perform maintenance on the Glendale Well. So the Glendale Well is, was developed 25 years ago. Over the past year, we've seen some diminished performance, and so, you know, we had engineers look at it, and we, we really need to do kind of a redevelopment activity on the well. So this article just allows us to take money from our retained earnings fund and just into our, you know, operating budget, if you will, and, and so that we could do this maintenance activity.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of the motion under Article Fifteen? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article Fifteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Fifteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Sixteen, please?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, move that the town appropriates the sum of $190,000 to purchase and install a new heating system for the Highway Department facility, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow the sum of $190,000 under General Law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection seven one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore provided, and in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection twenty, any premium received by the town upon the sale of bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project cost and the amount authorized to be borrowed, for such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purpose.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This article is to allow for borrowing for the Highway Department heating system. Currently, the heating system is failing or probably has failed at this point. It is 50-plus years old. The reason that this is so important and can't wait another year to be put into like a capital stabilization fund is that when you're dealing with diesel vehicles, you need to keep them heated throughout the wintertime. If you don't keep them heated, the fuel starts to gel up and they become useless. So this is a vital part of our snow removal operation and to maintain our vehicles throughout the winter.
Thank you. And who else would like to speak on this? I'm just looking around.
Mike Dealer, again. We're appropriating 190,000, but borrowing 98. So where is the $92,000 balance coming from?
Okay. Would like to speak on that?
Correct, that's yet another typo. And I read 190 into the record.
And answer your question?
Ninety-eight is the incorrect number, it should have been 190 in there twice. No, because I verbally said 190 twice.
This requires two-thirds, and we need a paper ballot because it's borrowing according to our bylaw. So there's a yes and a no. Rip it in half. Use the white one. You've got three different colors, you've got a blue one and a yellow one, but we're going to use the white one now. So rip it in half, and the way you want to vote, yes, put in yes in the box, no, put no in the box, and you can keep one for a bookmark later on at home. Counters, I need you to collect the votes. They'll pass a box in the rows, and you, like church, put in your little contribution. So again, we're going to use the white ballot, cut it in half, and only put one in. Whatever your vote is, yes or no, put it in the box. Anybody did not vote? All right, while they're counting the votes, we're going to go on to Article Seventeen. Mayor, a motion for Article Seventeen, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,069,842 for the purpose of replacing and upgrading water mains on College Highway. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow the sum, the same sum, of $2,069,842 exactly, under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, subsection one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore provided, and in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty-four, section twenty, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project cost, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purpose.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this?
Hello, Brett Simmons, Water Department. So this is a continuation of Phases One of the College Highway Water Main Replacement Project. I can hear myself. It's a continuation of the College Highway Water Main Replacement Project. It was started during previous administration here. This Phases Two and Three are kind of a mix, not a mix-up, we're combining them, we're mixing it up. We're combining Phases Two and Three to hopefully capture, you know, maybe $100,000 less. So this 2.069 million is a conservative number. We're estimating that it's going to come in a little bit less than that. And this water main is to replace 1932 cast iron, cast iron water mains that were installed in 1932 that are in pretty poor shape. As far as the distribution system, it's not that old, but the quality of the pipe from four past, past, previous main breaks, 2017, 2018, 2021, and the most recent is February of 2023, which happened adjacent, just in the southbound lane, but just north of the Fire Department. It was just off the edge of the road, but it caused enough damage on the road that between the 15 hours it took to repair it, payroll, parts, police detail, and then a subsequent Mass Highway to be rebuilt it, this, repave it, sorry, is roughly about $13,000 just for the repavement. So roughly that main break was about $20,000. So digging in College Highway is really expensive. So this project would hopefully take off in 2026, in the spring of 2026, so.
Thank you.
So, give you details on this project, it was, it'd be Phases Two and Three, it would go from Conant Park, it would be in the northbound lane, and Phase Two would go to East Street, which is right in front of Town Hall, and then Phase Three would go all the way up to roughly Palmero Meadow, just shy of Palmero Meadow. And in, in getting this project done, if everybody started a lead service inventory, it would actually knock out probably about 20 customers that we would have to physically dig up to identify the public side of the water main. So it'd kind of help us out in a little bit in all the aspects of daily operations at the Water Department, so.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition?
Mr. Moderator, could the Water Superintendent just confirm the statement I'm about to make? This is not going to be raised through general funds or taxation. This will be out of the enterprise account through the ratepayers of the water. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments? Come right up.
Hi, Martha Isad.
Somebody reach in and turn that down? There you go.
Martha Isad, eight golden circle. Question, will the residents?
Closer. Like ice cream cone.
Will the residents be responsible for tying into the new main?
I didn't hear the question. I've got a fan in my, my right ear here.
Question was, will the residents be required to tie into the new main? Well, there's existing water main there already. What this would do is put a brand-new 12-inch main in the pavement in the northbound lane, and this would replace from the water main to the easement, which is the curb stop in the front yard. So everybody would be getting half of their water main replaced under this project. half of their water main replaced under this project.
Direct your question at me, please.
Will the residents have any responsibility financially connecting once it's done?
No, the residents will not have. Ratepayers will be taking the burden of this, but the residents that are, well, the ratepayers, the current customers that are on the main already, will be getting half their water main, half their service replaced from the main to the front yard.
Answer your question? Great, thanks. Come right up.
Lawrence May, Hillside Meadows. I want to know if, are there any other ancient pipes that the town will be responsible for? Are there any other 1932 pipes? Or is this it? Does this take care of all of it? Because if it doesn't, we should take care of that now. All this should be corrected across the town. We should figure out what it's going to cost until we know what we have ahead of us. I know it's an estimate, but I think it's reasonable. And I think I'm going to step back now.
Thank you.
So this does not, and this is not the entire 1932 original water system that was installed. There's still nineteen hundred and fifty feet on East Street from College Highway to roughly Clark Street. And then there's additional little bit of cast iron up around some of, not Hillside, next to the Town Hall, Maple Street, High Street, and somewhere in those areas. So no, it will not replace all the cast iron that is in town.
Thank you. Answer your question back there? Okay. I'll take that. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Tim Gudette, One Thirty-Eight Valley Road, Board of Water Commissioners. You know, we go through a process periodically where we, you know, evaluate, you know, needs for ongoing projects. Back, I think it was like 2018, we developed a master plan. And so then, you know, we identify, you know, where, you know, the kind of areas that need replacement, and then we prioritize those. So just want to let people know that even though we're not fixing some of those other areas today, it's, we have a list that we maintain. And so once the College Highway project is done, then we kind of look at the list again and see what's next. So it'll be coming down the pike.
Okay. Great. Time's up. All right, we're going to vote. Paper ballots. Which color?
Bluey gold. You want to vote?
Vote.
We're going to take our gold ballot, paper ballot. This is borrowing. We have two in a row. You're going to take your gold ballot, or yellow, however you want to look at it, rip it in half, and take the yes or no, and put it in the box the way you want to vote. Yes for yea and no for nay.
I counted five major errors other than the, well, no, five major errors in all the articles, other than the, like, some placeholder numbers. I don't count the placeholder numbers for, like, the three catch transfers as errors. You know, people get stuck. This one might be an error saying that.
While they're counting the ballots for Article seventeen, we're going to go back to the article that we tabled, Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the motion that was read to strike out eighty-nine thousand and insert in its place ninety-eight thousand dollars per Article thirteen of the December fifth, 2023 special town meeting.
Do we have an amendment to the motion or an Article twelve? We have a second. We've amended the motion. We're not voting on the motion. We're just voting on the amendment. We're going from eighty-nine thousand to ninety-eight thousand. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment itself. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The amendment passes unanimously. Now we have an amended motion. Any comments on the motion itself? The amended motion for Article twelve. Seeing none, we'll vote on the amended motion for Article twelve. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion, amended motion for Article twelve passes unanimously. Let's see where we are. Okay, we're counting sixteen and seventeen. Let's go to, you ready for seventeen?
I have a count for sixteen.
For which one?
For sixteen, for heating.
For sixteen, sorry, my bad. Yeah?
Okay, a hundred and five, yes?
A hundred and five, yes.
And two, no.
How many?
Two.
Two, no. Okay, thank you. The motion for Article sixteen, a hundred and five ayes and two nays. It passes and meeting our two-third majority. We have a motion for Article eighteen, please.
Move that the town vote to transfer for the previous fiscal year bills totaling eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents as listed in Article eighteen of the May sixth, 2025 annual town meeting warrant.
Motion made or a second? Who would like to speak on this?
Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This is just payment of last year's fiscal year bill for the Police Department interpreter services of eighteen dollars eighty-one cents. That was invoiced late.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who want to speak on the opposition for motion under Article eighteen? Anybody want to? Go ahead.
So the motion references.
You have a point of order?
So this may not change the motion, but it references in the summary FY25, and this is an FY24 item.
So the article itself should be fiscal twenty-four, not twenty-five?
Yes.
Which doesn't affect the motion. Thank you for that clarification. Anybody want to speak on the motion itself? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article eighteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article eighteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article nineteen, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to enter into an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement pursuant to General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, or any other enabling authority on account of a solar photovoltaic facility or facilities to be installed on the property located at and known at as one hundred and sixty East Street and shown on the assessor's map, number thirty-six, parcel number one, on such terms and conditions as the select board deems in the best interest of the town, and to authorize the select board to take any other action necessary for the implementation and administration of such agreement.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded who would like to speak on this.
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. So this article would simply allow the select board to negotiate on behalf of the town to enter into a pilot agreement, which is a payment in lieu of taxes for the upcoming solar installation at Beshista Orchard. It is regulated by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. So any agreement must have the following components necessary, which is a mechanism that represents taxes at full and fair cash valuation, estimated projections by municipal assessors of the initial cash valuation and tax payments, a formula or fixed values to determine the values of the solar facility over the life of the agreement, the length of the agreement, documentation of the agreement provided to the DOR's Bureau of Local Assessment and record-keeping and reporting of the agreement values.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on a motion for Article nineteen. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article nineteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article twenty, please.
Excuse me. Move that the town amend Chapter two hundred and thirty-four of the town's general bylaw entitled Swimming Pools by amending the existing language as noted, deleting existing language where noted and replacing it with the new language as shown as set forth in Article twenty of the warrant for the May sixth, 2025 annual town meeting.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded who would like to speak on this, please.
Mr. Moderator, Ron Lauren, Building Commissioner. This article is based on swim pool setbacks, and the current setback is ten feet from a property line. If the bylaw changes, it would change it to fifteen feet. Any pools that are currently in place would continue to be legal through grandfathering. The other change to this bylaw is that pool covers are allowed under the Massachusetts Building Code for safety purposes for in-ground pools. If this passes, then there would also be a requirement for fences.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition to this motion under Article twenty?
Dylan Maudsley, Twenty-two Caitlin Way. I have a couple of questions and then a comment based on the answer to those questions. The first one, specifically under Restrictions, number seven. It states in compliance with Mass. Building Code seven-eighty CMR, Section one-twenty point M-101. Above-ground pools must be removed when the pool is not in use, if not secured by fencing. I would assume that refers to the ladder must be removed from an underground pool. I believe it would be kind of unfeasible to remove an above-ground pool when not being used.
Somebody want to answer that?
Yes, that's correct. The ladder would be removed.
Thank you. Answer your question?
Yes, and.
I'll give you another one.
Well, I got multiple questions, so I think if we're going to go forward, we would have to make an amendment there. I don't have that written out yet, but that's something that would need to be addressed. Secondly, the second question I have would be, do the current state building requirements under seven-eighty CMR, Section one-twenty, M-101, are those enforced by the building inspector, the building commissioner currently? Are those applicable to all the requirements for building of pools in Southampton as of now?
Currently, everything that's in there now is still part of the building code. That won't change.
Thank you.
So do pools have to comply with the state regulations? Yes, correct. Given that we have to comply with the regulations, I have my concern about the language in seven as well as other ambiguous language, specifically pools located on fenced property also require an adequate barrier immediately surrounding the pool, which is not defined anywhere within this bylaw amendment. I think it could create areas of ambiguity and that are not adequately addressed in here. And because these requirements by the state are currently in place and apply to Southampton, I think this is duplicitous. It's the wrong word. But this is repetitive in that a reference, I think a reference to the state regulation would be sufficient, but I think it's duplicative. That's the word I was looking for. To put it here, especially using ambiguous and vague language can lead to confusion for residents to complete projects on their property. Therefore, I am opposed to adopting these bylaws.
Thank you for your opinion. Any other comments, questions? Whoops. No need to rush. We're here. We're going to be here all night.
Kate Savery, Strong Road. I just have a question, same line item, line item four. Is that a mass regulation currently, Ron? Do we know if, that an adequate barrier in addition to the fence is required? I don't, I personally don't know that that is.
Okay, question. We have an answer, Ron?
Currently, there was a code change that allowed these safety covers, mechanical safety covers in lieu of fences. So in order for us to also require a fence, if somebody chooses to use the safety cover, currently, we couldn't say, we also want a fence.
Thank you. Answer your question? Good. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article twelve. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. All right, those in favor, raise your hands. I'm not sure I can count. Let's vote, let's count. Let's use your paddle. Counters? I don't want to make a wrong guess at this point in the evening. All those in favor, raise your paddles. Or your hand if you don't have a paddle. Are we done counting? Not sure yet. Okay, everybody lower your cards. Thank you.
Thirty-five on the right.
Twenty-eight on the left.
Okay. All those opposed? Please raise your cards.
Three on the left.
Okay.
Nineteen on the right.
I didn't hear you repeat.
Nineteen, one nine?
Nineteen. Sixty-three to twenty-two, it passes. Motion for Article twenty passes. Mayor, a motion for Article twenty-one. And by the way, we're on page fifteen. We're going to find the motion itself on page twenty-four if you want to follow through. Mayor, a motion for Article twenty-one, please.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to adopt the changes to Chapter two sixty-four, General Bylaws, Wetlands Protection, as presented in Article twenty-one of the warrant for the May sixth, 2025 annual town meeting.
Motion made or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded who would like to speak on this. And what Dan's going to do is going to read the changes that are highlighted. He's not going to read the whole bylaw, just the changes.
That's right. Thanks for reminding me. So yeah, Dan LaVelli, I'm on the Conservation Commission, so I just want to go over the changes, which are highlighted in bold. So the first one we see is on page eighteen. It's the number of Conservation Commissioners that are in office. So this helps us when we have not all members voted in. So if we have, how many we have in quorum to be able to hold meetings? It helps us when there's less members in, members of the Conservation Commission. Next one is page nineteen. All RDA applications will be treated as public hearings by the commission. That's clarification. There's one below that, Conservation Commission agent or commission members. So that talks about who has to be present during pre-construction. or Commission Members. So that talks about who has to be present during a pre-construction site visit. It adds the Conservation Commission Agent. Next one on page 20 is a deletion, so it just clears up that paragraph. Twenty-one, it changes a shall to a may, which I think is just different, better, better legal language from what I understand. Is that it? Oh, yep. Page 22, there's, we added the ability for the Conservation Commission to ask for a wildlife habitat study to be conducted. Is that it? Okay.
Thank you. Would like to speak on this? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 21. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 21 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adjust the eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D, not 41C, by 100% of the participation or percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue and to fix that annual increase at 100% of CPI to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1 of 2025.
Motion made. May I hear a second?
Second.
By the way, in the first sentence of the article, not the motion, it says Clause 17F. I understand that should be 17B. Who would like to speak on the motion, please?
I don't, I don't see the assessor, so I'll... Do you want to talk on this, or do you want me to run with it? Okay. So I'll, I'll see if I can clear it up to start with. This, this practice is in place already, but historically, you have to come back to the town meeting to change the factor or the eligibility that goes with it. It hasn't been done for a long time. Setting this here, automatically adjust it on an ongoing basis, and it would be part of the second motion as well. But the, doing this will increase the benefit received from the people that are eligible for the exemptions, including but not limited to the senior citizens and the veterans within the town of Southampton.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition to the motion for Article 22?
I'm not in opposition. I just have a question. Maureen Grode, Nature Lane. Do we have any idea how much this is going to alter the revenue for the town? My last understanding is that the number of seniors in town is growing exponentially.
Thank you. Would like to answer that? They're sitting all the way in the back in their cheap seats.
Kathy McEwen, I'm the Administrative Assessor, Administrative Assistant to the Board of Assessors.
We're closer to the mic itself.
The current exemption amount is $175 a year. If you increase this by the most recent CPI, the CPI for 2024, I believe, which was 3.21%, you would go from $175 to $180.62. It's a very small amount. There, this is our lowest exemption, and it compared to our other exemptions, it was really obvious that we need to get with the times because it has not been voted on for, since 2011. And so I think that should answer the question. And then there's also, will be that same 3.21% increase in the amount of income you're allowed to have, your assets, before you are no longer eligible for this exemption. So there's two small CPI increases.
Thank you. That answer your question?
Yes, we currently have 12 seniors receiving a 17D exemption. And I believe each one, because we are reimbursed by the state almost in full for these exemptions when we grant them, each one should cost about $12 per eligible person. So we don't have that many people, 12 people.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 22. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 22 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 23, please? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me just write this down. Hold on. Thank you. I'm on autopilot up here.
This is account for Article 17.
Article 17, yeah.
102 yays, 2 nays.
Okay. So thank you very much. So for Article 17, water main replacement borrowing, 102 ayes to 2 nays, it passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to adjust the eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025.
Motion made or a second? Motion made. Who would like to speak on this?
So this ties to the previous article that we just talked about this, but what this does is this increases the amount of assets a senior is allowed to have and still qualify.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of the motion under Article 23? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 323 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 24, please?
Move that the town vote to amend the Southampton zoning bylaw, Chapter 275 of the Code of Southampton by amending Section 275 dash 2 dot 3 definitions, Section 275 dash 7 dot 5 accessory dwelling units, Section 275 dash 7 dot 5 accessory dwelling units, and revising Attachment 1 dash Table 1, use regulations and insert in its place the amendment listed in Article 25 of the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demon, Pumory Middle Road Planning Board. The planning board of the last year has been working on several zoning amendments, revisions. Unfortunately, tonight, our board consultant, Richard Harris, who was the former town planner for the town of South Hadley, could not be with us, but he helped us along drafting these articles tonight. This one is specially accessory dwelling units, which the laws changed from the state of Massachusetts this past year. Our former zoning language was accessory apartment. Now they're known as accessory dwelling units, which allows people to either add an accessory unit to their current home, either detached or attached, or build some separate unit to allow more housing stock in affordable, affordable opportunities for people that are senior citizens or lower income. So it's well-written and it was pretty much revised.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition for Article 24? Any comments, questions?
So I just, I'm in full support of this in that because it allows our aging residents' housing affordability and young families opportunities to stay within Southampton. It supports the aging in place for seniors that can either create a rental unit on their property and/or have a caregiver move in or a family member move into the main structure. It expands affordable housing options within Southampton that we currently lack, the smaller, lower-cost rental units, encourages legal compliance for safety, it respects the neighborhood character, it streamlines the process, aligns with state law, and there's no mandate. It's just an option for existing homeowners to expand upon.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Right up to the mic.
Hi, Martha Issad, Golden Circle. Does this address, is there any language addressing short-term rentals such as Airbnbs?
No, it does not. That is a separate issue that we're taking up going forward. It's a separate issue. Short and long-term rentals is a separate zoning issue in our bylaws, which is not pertinent to this.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we need a two-thirds majority. We're going to vote on the motion for Article 24. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 24 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 25, please? And by the way, the motion is on page 34.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt the changes to the Southampton zoning bylaw, Chapter 275, replacing Article 9 entitled Site Plan Review and Approval with new language titled Site Plan Review listed in Article 26 of the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Once again, Mr. Moderator, Paul Demon, Planning Board. Once again, this is cleaning up language that is kind of archaic in the current zoning. And Mr. Harris did a good job of replacing a lot of language in there. And it's also going to streamline the process somewhat because in our current regulations, Site Plan Review and Site Plan Permit were two separate meetings. And this way here, if it's combined, it'll make the process for applicants going forward much smoother.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition in the motion for Article 25? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. We need a two-thirds majority approval. All in favor of the motion for Article 25, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 25 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 26, please?
Move that the town vote to adopt the changes to the Southampton zoning bylaw, Chapter 275, amending Section 275 dash 3 dot 2 dot B, Section 275 dash 3 dot 9, Section 275 dash 7 dot 4 dot B1, Section 275 dash 7 dot 5 dot E1, and Section dash 7 dot 15 dot E1 as listed in Article 26 of the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Paul Demon, Planning Board. And again, this article refers back to Article 19, that these changes would update the language of the Site Plan Review to conform with Article 19.
Motion, okay. Anyone who speak in opposition? Any comments, questions for this motion under Article 26? It needs a two-thirds majority. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 26, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 26 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 27, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Southampton zoning bylaw, Chapter 275 of the Code of Southampton, solar electric generating facilities by amending Section 275 dash 2.3 definitions to insert new definitions regarding solar or electric generating installations. Section 275 dash 7.6, solar electric generating facilities, amend Attachment 1, Table 1, use regulations in the wholesale transportation and industrial uses category, and repeal the existing Section 275 dash 7.6, solar electric generating facilities in its entirety, and replace it with new language as shown as set forth in Article 27 of the warrant for the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Paul Demon, Planning Board. Once again, this was rewritten, this bylaw. For those of you who have solar and might have gone through this, the process was uncalled for, really. We threw together a bylaw back in 2012 very haphazardly, but we had nothing on the books. And we found out in recent years that residential ground mount is allowed by right in most communities up to 100 or 250 KW. And we were regulating ground mount with a special permit at 10 KW. So it was very, very onerous. And now it is going to be strictly by a building permit. And the larger capacity solar fields, whether they be 100 or 250, will be by special permit. But residential ground mount going forward, which was the key to this, is now going to be by right.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition on this motion? Any comments, any questions?
Chris Grant, 25 Helen Drive. So this is in line with the new, or semi-new, or it allows the new expansion to 25 kilowatt without any additional regulation or permits?
The answer is yes. Answer your question? Great. Any other comments, any questions? Need the two-thirds approval? We'll vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The vote is unanimous, meeting our two-thirds requirements. May I hear a motion for Article 28, please?
Do you need my name first? Ciara Simmons, Community Preservation Committee Chair. Article 28. Move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2026 and to allow sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 28, separated by line, of the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded. Please speak.
So this is not spending any new money. This is taking money we already have from the community preservation surcharges and the state match, and we're just allocating it into the places where we need it to go.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 28. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 28 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 29, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $66,000 from the community preservation surcharges to the Southampton Greenway Committee for the town's local matching share of a mass trails grant for the design process of the greenway bicycle and pedestrian path. Said funds to be taken from the community preservation Said funds to be taken from the community preservation surcharges open space recreation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Please speak.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Cassis, 19, Foma Road. I'm a member of the Greenway Committee. This would provide a match to Mass Trails grant for ongoing planning and design of the greenway. If the grant is successful, brings in $325,000 of state money for ongoing design.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this motion under Article 29? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 29. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 29 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 30?
Mr. Moderator, I move the final article this evening, that the town vote to set the limitation expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article 30 of the May 6th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Scott Zabak, Town Administrator. This is just our annual renewal of what the spending limits can be for revolving accounts. So essentially, this is the most that any department that has a revolving account can spend based on their fees and other revenues that they bring in.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 30. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 30 passes unanimously. That concludes our business for the night. I will entertain a motion now to dissolve our annual town meeting. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Opposed. This annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you, Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, Deputy Moderator Ciara Simmons, our county's police chief Rayanne, and attorney Brian Riley from Copman Page. And thank you all for your very valued participation. Safe home.